Call to meeting to order and hope that Jane gets here ASAP. Call to order and quarter our members present as please.
Barton.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
McDermott is asking.
I have to leave by about six.
Perfect.
Open meeting, compliance statement read please.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in the public view in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. I agree with said agenda, all the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board member, unless any board member desires to have separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussing consideration and approval of the following: 3.1 Addition of items for new business to the agenda; 3.2 Minutes of the June 3rd regular meeting, June 7th special meeting, and June 26th regular meeting; 3.3 Approval of financial report; 3.4 Approval of extra duty assignment schedule; 3.5 Approval of booster club sanctioning request; 3.51 is Alba 4-H FFA Booster Club; 5.2 is Alba Football Booster; 5.3 Black and Gold; 5.4 Electric Gold; 5.5 Gold Led Band; 3.6 Approval of the activity fund report; 3.7 Approval of the activity fundraisers; and 3.8 Declare the following items as surplus. So we'll start with 3.1 Additional items of new business to the agenda.
Oh, how do you think addition?
None of those, okay. 3.2 I draw your attention to the computer with the minutes of the June 3rd regular meeting, June 7th special meeting, and the June 26th regular meeting. Can I ask if there are any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes of the June 3rd regular meeting, June 7th special meeting, and June 26th regular meeting.
What should we do on the second?
My second.
Let's just wait until it all comes.
Do it all at once?
We'll do the consent agenda all at one time.
Okay. 3.3 Approval of financial report. Thank you, Terry.
Yes, no problem.
Well, first one for you to see the investments. I think all the county may be our carryover balances. I think we approved last month for the county treasurer to manage those investments for us. Revenue report, the next link, the third. I would initially have this up, or you can see on the TV, just throw that out there. Just don't not connect to it technologically. So, work on that. So you got that, the report that she's got made for you. I think the big column to look at is the FY 2024 percent collected. If it's above 100%, that means we collected more than, actually we collected more than what estimate needs showed. If it's less than 100%, we collected less. So, going down, all that, our collections are pretty, were pretty healthy for the most part. The only, the only big one, your gross production, what they, what they estimated for gross production and what was actually collected was, you know, $571,000 off. That's just indicated where our economy is, what's going on in Northwest Oklahoma right now. Other than that, everything is well over 90%. Getting down to federal programs, top four was a little bit less. So, all in all, doing pretty good on, you know, revenue wise. The next link is the FY 25 projections. That's, get to the bottom of that page, projected fund balance for FY 25, that's your carryover from '24. So, July 1st, we had $5.9 million in carryover. We were, we were a little bit off, but I think what our expenditures and what we had heated into the carryover just a little bit, less than 2%. So, we had a total budget, plus or minus 2% is really, really okay. Some years are gonna be over, some years, so we're, they were staying right, right down the middle on that, so. So my total collections, last year, they, estimate needs had $17,751, and we collected $18,79,000. So, all in all, collections doing pretty healthy that way. We've issued, so far we've issued $11,925,000 in, and that's last year.
Last year.
That's last year's account, so.
Can I go back to, on the FY '24 revenue? The federal resources, there's a Title II, and we have collected zero percent, is that, is that something the State Department has just not released? Okay.
Yeah, we were kind of battling with the State Department on releasing Title II funds.
I understand.
We got the okay last Wednesday.
Well, that's, okay, it's just Wednesday, we haven't received that. Well, I mean, that's a...
Yeah, it's been a monthly...
It's been $1,000, so...
Ongoing battle, so...
I understand.
It's been, hey, I'll, I'll say this, it's been every school, right, every super teacher I've talked to, it's taken six weeks, would you say six weeks for a good average? To even, to even get a claim approved, and it's usually two or three before you get the revenue, front, once the claim's approved.
We honestly have been working since February.
I was gonna say, well, you hear that on the news, and I just was making it...
My former school, we, we put an amendment to the budget end in November, we got it approved in April, submitted the first, the first claim in April, and got that claim approved in June, on the 18th of June, and we, we got the payment for that on the 28th.
Well, I know your hands are tied, but I just also think sometimes the public doesn't understand when they give them money, it's just that we've done our best to get it, and we've located, we just haven't been given it. Thank you for that clarification. 3.4 Approval of extra duty assignment schedule?
We will, we'll approve that further down the agenda.
Okay. We have 3.5 Approval of booster club sanction requests, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, for you all to look at.
Those are all the normal ones, Alba FFA, 4-H Booster Club, Football Boosters, Black and Gold Boosters, Electric Gold, and Gold Led Band Booster.
Okay, and this is something that we do every year.
It's, it's incredibly state law to sanction the Booster Club, and that to provide financial documentation.
Thank the organizations for doing due diligence and doing what state law says and asks us to do, so thank you for that. Any questions? Approval, 3.6 is approval of activity fund report.
So you see the revenue expenditure summaries and all the things, the, she's got the full year '23, '24, looking to where we're starting in July, so that's, I mean, that's what I've been looking at. Working with the coaches and different people, of course, I think fundraisers is further down, all organizations, just kind of getting into, there's a couple accounts, I thought I said particularly, I'm gonna stabilize, try and grow a little bit, I think there's some ways we can, you know, the marketing plan that we started last year, we can grow that, do some of those kind of things, try and, like, there's $10,000 in, yeah, eight or three, probably around $10,000 left in athletics accounts, so try and grow that a little bit, other than that.
Okay.
Activity fund's pretty healthy.
3.8 Declare the following items as surplus.
I don't have anything on that one.
We catch seven, I'm sorry. Catch number seven, the fundraisers.
Well, I said activities, so I just jumped right over it. So there is a 3.7 that I, thank you, Terry, approval of activity fund fundraisers, if you'll look at that, we've got, organizations, and basically, yeah.
It looks like the majority of them are there. Last year you had 154 total fundraisers, yeah, 154 total fundraisers, this, this list has 138, so, I'm sure we'll pick up a few as the year goes, that should be the bulk of fundraisers on this list.
Okay.
Okay, I'm so sorry. And there is no surplus.
No surplus. You've had a chance for, I think motion to accept. 3.1, 3.8.
Do we need to exclude 3.4, which is the approval of extra duty assignment schedule? We're gonna do that in a later day, later, we need...
Yeah, if this does have anything attached, I think we're okay.
Is there a motion?
I motion to be approved, consented agenda.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Number four, look to approve purchase order cover services for the following funds for FY 25. 4.1 is general fund.
Okay, if you look at that first link, the GF, July, general fund for July, numbers one through 65 are all the blanket purchase orders. That's gonna include utility bill, insurance premiums, workers' comp, any memberships like the SSBA, fuel costs, you know, the normal things, everything to spend money on throughout the year. Number 65, number 66, this is a purchase order, national bus sales. Once we got into that, we had, kind of having a good agreement to how the state bank is gonna lease the bus and, or do, they extended a lot of credit, and they're gonna, they're gonna lease it from them, but, going through all that, I think it'd be better if we just paid, both of us, paid it off financially, it'd be better for, better stewards of tax dollars, release what that allows too. You know, we really appreciate Alba State for affording that lot of credit to help purchase the bus, and, you know, when the business come in the future as well, but, there's some things that came out that probably be better for the district just to, was gonna pay for the bus and get it here. There's, I think Steve's going to talk to the graphics, can't think of the name of that.
Big stuff.
There you go. About a graphic package for the bus, and go and get it here and get those things out.
So where is the bus?
Tulsa, I think it's in Tulsa. It's, it's in the state, we just gotta take a check and go bring it, bring it out. It's ready, ready to pick up. So that's number 66. 70 through 132, those are the purchase orders for each site, you can see where it broke down, right, side by side, and that's, you know, school supplies to get the year started. And then, 133 through 139 are specialty services, stuff to get, for the most part, purchase orders there, majority of them are just getting the, getting the school year started. Then the, the next link, general fund PR is payroll, it's a covering of, I'm about to say all, the majority of the salaries for the school year. It's a salary payroll for FY 25, for our contracted employees that we've already hired, already approved. This does not include any payments like bus driving and gate duty, thing like that, that'll come up as the year goes. It also includes the total costs of the district, so it's gonna include social security and FICA, and the flex benefit is the school insurance, those kinds of things. So those numbers look a lot bigger than what they're actually getting paid, because it includes all the other stuff, you know, those costs of the district, so, that's what the GFPR is.
Okay. Well, hello, Mrs. McDermott. I am really relieved to see you here. I, we are at 4.2. No, I'm just happy to pass this baton back. Oh, I just jumped over 3 and 4, you know, thank gosh for cheering everyone, I waited a while over here, so I just didn't talk about that. But I hadn't worn up my pitching arm, I wasn't quite ready to do this. Put me in, coach, you know.
Our crew was down, and I was a little similar. I just, I didn't see, I was just, oh my gosh.
We are at 4.1, he just finished off 4.1.
Okay, good. 4.2.
We're building from purchase orders, that's, well, this is a loss order. It's blanket purchase orders, there's a couple there for playground blocks and flooring, gotta be going in Washington and Longfellow, but the next one will have the same thing for Lincoln. Students and facility upgrades and playground upgrades, things like that, that like the purchase orders. Start the year. Right, talk to the next one, 4.3 is child nutrition fund, and it's, again, like the purchase orders start the year, primary to Keystone and maintenance cost of the kitchen. There is a handful of employees, I think there are three employees there that we are still retaining, that's that second, child nutrition, second link. As, as, as we change staffing in the kitchen, Keystone's taking those employees, we had a handful who want to stay at school for retirement options, things like that, so we have three of those left, so that's what the payroll is for child nutrition, those three kitchen workers.
Okay, so 4.1, 2, and 3, motion to accept those items presented.
Move to approve items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second?
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Superduty report.
I've, I've attached my super duty report there, pull it up. I always like to do, when, when it's proper to do, kind of legislative updates, we get, talk a lot about this, kind of January through April, May time, and then, usually in June, this year, or start of July, like to do kind of the big, hit the big things that actually passed, you got prosecutor's desk, everything. The, the big things that I think's gonna affect us the most, House Bill 2102, and I've got divided their students, employees, and kind of district administrative board. House Bill 2102 restricts driver's education. What that's going to do is require districts providing driver's evidence, Coach Beeler's art, drives that teacher. They can only allow one student driver to drive, no other students in the vehicle unless they have written permission from the parent to allow their student to be in the vehicle with that student. That presents some, some problems, but that's the law that was passed, so, I think, talk to Mr. Beeler, having that kind of standard form, and parents encourage him to sign that so we can continue, but, anyway, they do have that option. House Bill 2158 admits personal financial literacy. For years, we've had, I mean, I'd say years, a couple decades, we've had to teach those 14 points of financial literacy, it's gotta be embedded in the curriculum, somewhere between the seventh grade and 12th grade, right? They've amended that, now it's gotta be, I think, starting with this year's freshman, it's gotta be in high school, that's our 35, 36, so this year's eighth graders, they've gotta have it in high school, must be completed grades 10 and level 12. It can be taught in partnership with the technology education class, or a tech center. There's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff they cover there, just getting specific on what they already do. The big thing I think that's gonna do is it requires the teacher to be certified in the relevant secondary subject area. It lists those as ag education, business information technology, economics, family consumer sciences, history and social studies, marketing and math, or special permission from the State Department. So, it's outside of career tech classes, it's throwing it on our, on our core teachers that already have a worry about House Bill 1's scores, you know, state tests, or something like that. So, they're, they're trying to hone in on that financial literacy, and that'll affect the way that we administer some curriculum in the high school. House Bill 2672, it modifies the graduation path, there's like three bills on this, let's pick the first one here. House Bill 3278's the big one, and then just send the other one with it. What all these bills are doing, the graduation path, is, it's gonna require four English, that we always had, it's gonna add a fourth math that's required, so four English, four math, still three science, still three history, three locally approved units, okay, so whatever we say, passed. It added these things called pathway units, it's gonna have six pathway units, and it's working towards ICAP, so it's working towards the career path. They have fine arts or world languages, they're still there, so there's restructuring, what the state's gonna accept is minimum graduation requirements. So that's, so between the financial literacy and those three house bills, it's gonna change the way we're structuring some classes in the high school, for sure.
If a student declares an ICAP major and says, "I wanna be a chef," how do we meet those graduation requirements? And that was a question I posed to Representative Newton, and he said, and he, you know, it's from Alba, and I said, "Well," he said, "How would you propose?" 'Cause he knows I work with ICAP, and I said, "Well, I would think that if a student really was sincere in taking assessments with ICAP, and that was their desire to be a culinary chef, and they live in Northwest Oklahoma, then why can't all of their home economics, EPC LA classes that they take all four years count towards that ICAP?" And he said, "Well, should." But I had never gotten any clarification to the State Department of that, you know, I feel like saying so.
It would appear, and I was in a good, we're in a good spot, we...
Much better than many of my other schools.
Family consumer sciences.
Yes, we did.
Middle school, high school, we've got Ag Ed, we're gonna talk, well, that's the next one.
Right.
We've got Ag Ed, middle school and high school. Mr. Eckert, Eckert is teaching, well, he just got a credit as a career tech last year for business, business, marketing, information technology, BMO, so, that's one of those classes, right? So between those three, so, your example, kid wants to be a chef, we need to structure our family consumer science classes to meet those, those ICAP demands. Your, your Ag Ed, kid wants to be a welder, we've got shop class, we call it shop, right? We call it welding, it's ag mechanics, right, technology, so there's, we need to structure our...
That's bound to be on, the transcript is transcribing it correctly, so that is...
Yes.
And I think that's what we're gonna come out to very closely, whoever they are...
As I've looked at Alba, in our course offerings, I think it's just gonna be a matter on our side to make sure we're coding those classes correctly, like, we're teaching this stuff, we're already teaching this stuff.
Right.
Guys like me, we're, I'm still gonna call shop, it's really ag power technology, right? So, and then if our, if our comprehensive high school can't offer it, we have the career tech, that's a whole expanded course offering, and if they don't have it, you know, we got Northwestern. So, if a kid wants to be a physical therapist, they're just a sports training, kind of coursework at Northwestern. So I think it's, that's gonna be some conversations with the administration there, or really with the legislature, how do we, how do we broaden that, that concurrent offering at those, at those regional colleges to help us meet these requirements?
And that was my conversation that pretended to do, I said, "Don't hide it, prime ICAP, and not give us credit, 'cause I said it's being taught."
Yeah.
And fortunately, when Alba and Sheriff, he also have outstanding EPC LA...
You're awesome, I think.
Back to the chef thing, and I said, "But let's give those schools credit where it's credits due," and he said, "Oh, we will." Well, that's a little alarming to me, when we still don't have funds at the state.
There's several of us in the super test circle. Comprehensive schools, the sec, the, the public schools, we've gotta be better about two, we've gotta be better about marketing ourselves to tell the public what we're gonna be teaching. Yeah, I mean, that's why I tell you, it's just, it's kind of, it goes all over me, for years I've heard, "Well, you need to be teaching kids how to balance a checkup." We do, it's in our financial literacy, we literally do, credit cards, and car loans, and mortgages, and all the things, tax returns, we do teach that, it's just not, we, we just don't advertise it, we don't, we don't sell ourselves, we need to be better with that, because we are teaching better.
Well, I just know that's...
Senate Bill, Senate Bill 991 expands options for Ag Ed programs. The big thing it's doing is, it's gonna remove the restriction of Ag Ed programs that'll be taught eighth grade and up, every other career tech, seventh grade, seventh sixth, right, so that, so the legislature directed the Ag Ed office and still ordered to remove that, that requirement, so, potentially we could have seventh grade Ag classes, that's gonna be, we're gonna figure our scheduling and see if that's something we want to expand to, but it is, it is offered in, and how that, how that coexists with 4-H would be another question, I think, just, there's a lot of questions as a former Ag teacher, I'm just like, how they gonna work?
I thought you were gonna do geriatrics or something. H. Well, I looked at it first, but...
He would, he would, he first of all.
I put it in all caps, it's...
Sounds like age of dust.
Getting old is all caps.
It sure is.
Senate Bill 1302 expands Oklahoma's promise for career tech classes. The big thing coming out of that, and they had several slides on it, the big thing is it allows a student who's competed, completed core curriculum graduation requirement to be eligible for Oklahoma's promise, which is OLAT, at a career tech school, and we haven't been able to do that in the past. Oklahoma's promise has only been for college, and they've expanded that, saying, "Okay, if you've completed core curriculum, you can use OLAT scholarship at a career tech." So, they're, they're just trying to expand this offering. Legislation that affects staff, House Bill 3958, we're, that's one of our last agenda items, this deal on House Bill 3958. It restricts digital communication with students, that's the one that went to effect July 1st immediately. It defines electronic communication, clarifies that school staff are not required to include parents on academic communication, listen to students through school-approved platform. So, school-approved platform, we don't have to include parents, it's, it's good practice, but parents don't wanna hear every, you know, practice starts at 3:30, text that goes out. If it's on school-approved platform, we do the thing, we'll talk about that in a minute too. But, if it's not on school-approved platform, it requires the parent to be on the communication with the students. So it's really gonna change the, and honestly, that's, I mean, we talked elementary, I think our, our elementary here does a pretty good job of using the school-approved stuff already, and there's a lot of places still using ClassDojo, or GroupMe, or Remind, or Band, or, I mean, there's all of these different apps, okay? And we, we, we have to select one and get with the entire staff. So they're really trying to hone down on the communication, adult, student communication, which is problematic when they say you can't have one-to-one student jobs at a time. That, that, that's, anyway, that's the big one, and that's what everybody's focused on right now. Legislation that affects district boards and administrators... But if it's not on school-approved platform, it requires the parent to be on the communication with the students. So it's really going to change the, and honestly, that's, I mean, we talked elementary. I think our elementary here does a pretty good job of using the school-approved stuff already. There's a lot of places still using Class Dojo or GroupMe or Remind or Band or, I mean, there's all of these different apps. And we have to select one and get with it with our staff. So they're really trying to hone down on the communication, adult, the student communication, which is problematic when they say you can't have more than one student drop their turn. That's what I guess. Anyway, that's the big one, and that's what everybody's focused on right now. Legislation that affects district boards and administrators. House Bill fourteen twenty-five requires religious education. Requires school districts to allow students to use the school for up to three class periods per week, or one hundred and twenty-five class periods per school year to attend a quote, "released time course" in religious and moral instruction provided by an independent entity off school property. So not a certified teacher, but we have to give them an electric period to go off campus three hours a day for religious and moral instruction. Again, it's going to affect how we do our schedule in high school. It's also going to be very problematic if you're going to have seniors, since they just upped the graduation requirements, but you're going to have seniors that potentially don't have the credits to graduate because they left campus three hours a day.
They offer that.
It's a thing.
And they could do three hours all four years during that primary school.
So that's probably the biggest part is there's a bunch more to hand on that. Talk about charge schools, virtual schools. Yeah, that's a big one. House Bill thirty-seven eighty clarifies the open meeting act. The big piece of that, and we're already doing it. It allows public, or it says we have to put all of our agendas and stuff on the website. We already do that. It does reinstate that public meetings can be via video conference if each member is visible and audibly, such as to the following, no less than a corps of present in person. So if we have somebody that can't be here for one reason, they can log in, and we can do a virtual meeting that way. That was part of the original open meeting act that took it out and we'll put it back in. So as long as you have a corps in the room. That's most of that. That's one that could. I mean, I could see us utilizing that.
That person can be from, be zooming in or whatever, from anywhere, or do they have? Right after COVID, wasn't there a deal where you had to be in the district to come in electronically? Or am I making that up? I feel like that we had to be in the district if you were going to come in electronically.
What they give us doesn't specify. I know what you're talking about. The way they explain it does, you could be at a conference in.
San Diego.
Yeah, maybe out in San Diego.
Well, I think it's still weird.
San Diego, be in life with them. You know, you could be out of town, legitimately, be in Oklahoma City at a conference. They can't be here physically, but we could be at a conference you're in and you still participate in a board meeting. And as long as they're at a corps, that's the way.
Physical corps.
Yeah, it's the way they've explained it. House Bill thirty-nine thirty-seven required written, their website posting an agenda. Senate Bill sixteen fifty-one clarifies out-of-state transfers. And this will affect, for this one school in Woods County, I would say. It waives the tuition fee for a non-resident student, meaning an out-of-state student. They're supposed to pay tuition fee to come into Oklahoma. We got to this in the panel, like you'd have those liberal kids or liberal kids on the campus. And they had to pay tuition coming to state because there's no tax revenue for that student, really very nuts. So it waives that tuition fee if the school does not receive state aid and has a per pupil expenditure above the state average. So that really loosens the requirements on out-of-state transfers. And then the last one, rather than bring it down, House Bill nineteen fifty-five cut the grocery tax. It eliminates the four-and-a-half percent state sales tax, the retail sale of food and food ingredients. It sounds cool, right? It's all like we get fruit and dirt, but it's really specific on what those are those categories. So it's not quite the tax cut, it sounds like. But, you know, it's back to the same thing. You cut taxes here, it goes in the pot there, and eventually it can catch up to you. Not just schools, but roads and bridges and everything else. Anyway, those are the legislative things I want to draw your attention to, kind of keep your ears up on the news. Facility-wise, they got new carpet put in, the library at the middle school. I think they're down that, aren't they? New flooring is either in the process or is going to be installed at the three elementary schools. We've got new playground mulch that's been ordered.
Delivered today.
Cut. Yes, so it's going to overlay the wood chips that are already there. It's that soft, non-splitter wood chip, whatever. Overlay that, and I talked to Patricia, and she was talking about taking up the rawed timbers and putting new timbers in. I think all that's been ordered or maybe delivered. All that's in the process, then just like a normal maintenance in the summer. So facility, lots of stuff going on there. Talked off the bus, it's in Tulsa, should be delivered hopefully this week. House District Updates, updating the website communications to be compliant, House Bill thirty-nine fifty-eight. Would like to move to a company called Apogee for our school website. They've got a pretty, it's very user-friendly for the teachers and stuff, and it should zone in all that communication stuff. It's the same, it started as a school-based, schools and municipalities. It's the same website the city Alvis uses. So I don't know if you've got the ALVA app downloaded, it's got, our app will look very similar to that. So it's the same one the city Alvis chose to use. And then I'm, I'm creating a meeting with our assistant athletic directors this week to finalize planning for next school year. Trying to get all this athletic director thing to give me that, that can help with the marketing plan and fundraising and all the things. Anyway, that's my, kind of my, my other reservations or retirements for these items.
Item number six, six point one, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract for applicant number one through number six. Emergency certifications all pending state board approval. So we'll start with applicant number one.
Okay, applicant number one is Natalie Nichols. She graduated from Northwestern with a degree in biology. You can stand up if you'd like. Most of us recognize her, Natalie Severs was her maiden name. And she is currently employed at Northwestern, and now she will be coming to us. So we're excited to have her. Applicant number two is Stephanie Nichols. She is the middle school counselor. She's finishing up her master's degree in the next couple of weeks. And so then her certification will be complete after that. Applicant number three, is it okay if I just go through?
Okay, number one is a science teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Middle school, she's going to have seventh grade and sixth grade, a couple of sixth grade classes.
Good. And then number two is a counselor.
Yes.
Already available position or just used to.
Yes.
On another one-year contract.
Yes, yes. Applicant number three is Madison Hoffen. She graduated from ALVA High School and also from Northwestern with her instrumental degree, music degree. And she, you know, was in the band there, you know, she also was a, what did I have here? Oh, she was a drum major. There you go, she was a drum major and she's, so we think she's got this, she's got this. Also, she was a substitute for us last year. So, and she's going to be our band instructor.
You know, it's so good.
Applicant number four, I was not able to be with us tonight, but that is Emma White. And we'd like to bring her to the board under a temporary contract. And she'll be joining us. She'll be doing two hours of high school history. And then she will be an extra benefit as an elementary counselor, serving as, doing some behavioral intervention and things like that for the elementaries. She has a bachelor's degree in social work from Northwestern, a master's degree from the University of Oklahoma. She's done some elementary teaching, she's done some social work. And so she's going to be a huge asset and cover some, cover some things for us and then just be a great addition to our counseling that we want to do.
So she'll be accessible to all three elementary schools?
She will be mostly at my school, but will be available if needed to go to the other elementary.
Thank you.
Yes, that's the next one.
Apologize, I suppose I prepared Emma Klein. She is finishing up her certification, so we have her on emergency certification to the state. And we'd like to keep her, she's been a great asset to us, and we'd like to keep her in the elementary, elementary, music, yes, all three.
And then I would like to introduce Ms. Alexis Gasper. She's a familiar face, a familiar name. She actually worked for us at the middle school as a secretary and then as child nutrition director. And she actually resigned in May, planning to take a different route for her family that would better fit them. And luckily, we got in touch, and she has one year of experience substitute teaching in preschool. So she has some early childhood experience. And we got in touch and talked about an emergency certification. And when I had another kindergarten position come open, it was very exciting that I had someone that's local, that's interested in filling that need. She was a very dedicated employee for us already, so I have no doubt that she's going to do everything possible. She's already started her classes at Northwestern. She's very diligent in all of her homework that she's had. So I'm very, very excited and relieved to add her to Washington. And she's married to Cameron, and she has baby Baker. Add that story. Yeah. I like that.
A lot of work and more motion. I'll entertain motion to approve item number six point one for applicants number one through number six. I make the motion that we approve and offer employment for one-year temporary contract for applicants one through six. And I do know all of your names, but I won't list them because they're listed here for emergency certifications, depending upon the state, depending on the state board of education.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Well, welcome to all of you. Hey, three, two, one, you got it. Are you the assistant band run?
Yes.
I think you are. I think you are. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave if you would like. So you may be dismissed if you would like to. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. See ya.
See ya.
Bye.
Bye.
See ya. Is this? Yeah.
No doubt.
Okay, item six point two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following salary schedules and assignments for fiscal year twenty-five. First one is the administrative salary schedule. Let's do this separately.
The administrative salary schedule is the same as it's been, other than they had it combined. I think it was assistant principal, athletic director, maybe it was one, twenty-five percent of that base. And we separated that to assistant principal fifteen percent of that. Try to get it back in line when we separate those duties and get along with the other principal stipends. That's the only change in the administrative salary schedule. We did call assistant principal slash dean of students. Just kind of looking down the road to the future, if you ever hired a dean of students, that'd be the same, same rate.
So we have motion for six point two point one.
Move we approve item six point two point one as presented.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Item six point two point two is teacher salary schedule.
It is the same salary schedule as what you approved last year. You know, she just updated the date. It's, if you look at the minimum teacher's schedule on the state department website, it's going to show thousand, ten, twenty less than what this is. Gosh, what's that been now? Seven, eight years ago, six or seven years ago? The state gave the teachers a twelve-twenty raise, but they didn't add it to the salary schedule. So our schedule's twelve-twenty above what the state actually shows. And then ALVA extends that, or you've been extending that to thirty-five years instead of twenty-five. So anyway, that's under recommend approve that.
Any motion?
Motion to approve six point two point two. Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Six point two point three, support personnel salary schedule.
That schedule's the same as it was last year as well.
I make motion to approve six point two point three.
Second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Singleton.
Item six point two point four, extra duty salary schedule.
At the end, this extra duty schedule's the same as what it had been. Haven't changed either ranges or anything since then. As far as what we pay for each position, it's the same as it was.
Any motion please?
I'm moving to approve six point two point four. Second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Extra duty assignments.
See, that, so much duty schedule, it's got a range. Thousand, five thousand, whatever, depending on assignment. They've been trying to do like a three or three-and-a-half percent increase every year, similar to what the teaching schedule would be, so that you get a little increase every year. So we went through all that and tried to, tried to do that with majority positions. Then there was a couple of conversations that happened with Mr. Foster and stuff last spring. We felt like we needed to honor the ways that were promised. So that's where, that's where that came from. Still have a couple, a couple extra duties to fill. Athletic director being one of them, and I think with three assistants, we can get that covered if that. If we bulked that work down, so.
So who wanted to relax, football assistant?
Yeah, I think we have like an assistant football that we could fill if we had somebody.
So it's okay.
I think kind of, I think we've got, we've got a lot of wood chips to fill.
And we got the middle school basketball.
Basketball.
Middle school basketball. I was thinking about this one, but you may be more.
We would be missing assistant middle school football and then assistant middle school track.
Any motion to approve the extra duty assignments and salaries?
Move to approve item six point two point five. Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Hanson.
Going to, six point three, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year twenty-five. Are there some changes in any of these?
I'm the school resource officer. I don't have a contract back in the city yet on that. So I've recommended table six point three point one. Kind of playing fun tag with Chief Wokke as well. So I have to visit him, get the contract from the city so they approve it. Six point three point four, that's the one with Jase Keaton for the marketing, social media stuff. I had her, I had her put, combine those two contracts. Part of that, athletic department, we were paying out athletics. I think stabilized that account, I picked it up a general fund this year. So she combined those contracts into one. Just hire her to do all of our school marketing, whether it's athletics or. Whether it's athletics, or classroom, or FFA, or whatever. I just want a contract to pay her one time and, uh, try and help stabilize that athletics account a little bit.
Will she take over the website, too?
Oh, she did, well, she's gonna help with it a little bit. How is she gonna take over? Maybe pieces of it. That's the cool part about Apogee is it integrates with social media so much. Um, six point three point five. Now, I'm gonna back it up. Point two is shared medical, it's your physical therapy, it's the same as last year. Same thing about patient services on point three, talk about point four. Six point three point five is our contract with, uh, Circle H Cleaning Service. Work with him on clarifying some stuff in the contract, cleaning that up, so I'd like to table it right now, and we'll look at that again in August. Table one and five and the rest of them, I'm ready to approve.
So I need a motion to approve six point three point two, six point three point three, and six point three point four. Second.
I'll second it.
McDermott?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the First Amendment to the renewal lease agreement for, uh, number five, seventy-one passenger buses, five of the seventy-one passenger buses for fiscal year twenty-five is required under provisions of the lease agreement dating June seventh, twenty twenty-one between Alva School District and Midwest Bus Sales.
There are route buses we lease for Midwest bus. We should be getting new buses this year. Those buses aren't in yet. So they, they, this amendment will allow us to keep the buses we currently have on lease at no cost to the district until those new ones come in, probably September or October. So we just need the amendment so Midwest can allow us to keep those buses, and they're not gonna charge us the extra forms.
Keep the old, five old ones we had?
Keep, keep the five old ones until the five new ones get here.
You're here expecting them in September, October?
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Okay.
So if he goes past that, it's still.
I, I would assume it's gonna, yeah. But that's kind of the understanding.
How long do we have a bus until we get the new set of buses?
Two or three years. Like that, this one, this one's three years, I would assume.
Will we buy the other, the bus, the new bus we're getting out right?
Yes.
I move we approve, uh, six point four.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Yeah, the, uh, it's just the route buses that we lease, our activity vessels we have.
Thank you for inviting me, remember that from your. All right. Item number, uh, six point five. Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve board policy, D-H-A-C.
The attachments you have there shows all of the changes from the old policy to the new. This came from the OSSBA, Policy Services that we subscribe to. Changes that policy to be compliant with the House Bill thirty-nine fifty-eight. So you see all the things that cut out, talks about school-approved platforms and how you just have to name that. And then the, the big one, the big changes, they added a, a three or four paragraphs to the end of it, it's all underlined there. What do we have to do? So it's just modifying that policy to be compliant with all the things we were talking about.
We did our OSSBA people leaders, we did our platforms, but they, they, we have a contract with them that keeps our policy.
And you subscribe to Policy Services?
Might be one of the smartest.
Oh, yeah. They do a good job.
We're addicted to that. We just didn't, couldn't keep that. And not, not understanding the legal jargon sometimes, because even when we get it, I think we'll explain that to me. It's being a.
It is.
Good for them, good for us. All right, I want to take a motion that we approve this, this revisions, updates of this board policy.
Make a motion to approve item six point five, as presented. Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Any new business?
I don't have any new business.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Singleton?